Okay, I'm gonna get started and thanks, I appreciate it. And I think I got it. Uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, thank you for your time. Appreciate you and ask for your patience. This is my first hybrid meeting. I'm used to doing them on Zoom, but it's the first time I've been at City Hall under this new system. So thank your patience or probably, um, and I'm thin, I'm thick skinned enough so that if I'm doing something wrong, feel free to speak to me. As a stance night, right now, I believe everybody is muted except for Dean. And we also just wanna thank our host, uh, people at Focus Springfield for helping us to do this, facilitate this meeting. I believe late last month, early last month, we had a chance to meet great. Uh, and many of you were in that meeting. Uh, we got a chance to get to know each other and kinda get, really didn't get into a whole lot of things, but some things were tossed around. But the purpose of it is for you guys to know, get to know who each other were. Everybody wasn't in attendance. But today, uh, as we move forward, I'd like to kinda make, uh, get into some possible ideals or solutions that might be available. Contractor. Okay.
Uh, and you can, I will be down.
Welcome contractor. Yeah. Uh, so anybody wanna kinda kick it off? I think everybody understands the purpose of the meeting is workforce development and labor. We would like to get some general ideals on what we could present that stated by the end of the year to the committee of the whole as to ideals that might be implementable uh, with the right types of support and strategies applied by, um, the elected officials, not only just the city council, but the administration and perhaps even on the state level, uh, the legislative body. And I believe that one of the things that I could ask people at the meeting at the guard center to do was to come prepared with some ideals for the direction in terms of what we want to accomplish. And, um, so does anybody wanna, um, but everybody's muted and so if you wanna unmute and feel like you wanna jump in there, we'll try to manage it the best way we can. It's a little different than if we had been in a room together where everybody can kinda talk over each other, but well, we'll do the best we can. So. Anybody wanna start?
I just have one thing to say. I don't know if the door being open to like that other office, it's, I, there's a lot of feedback on my end.
Sure.
Sorry.
No apology. Just, like I said, this is new to me, so I'm, that might be, is it sound any better?
It seems a lot better. Yeah, thank you. Um, I did not get to come to the first meet and greet. I was sick, but I'm Chelsea Dell and I work for the Springfield Library System. So it's nice to see everybody in this hybrid setting. Um, and one of the reasons I wanted to come to this or be on this committee is because I feel very strongly about municipal employees getting paid family medical leave, which we don't have. Um, and I think that would be a huge draw for our Springfield workforce and, um, keeping people here and keeping families here. I don't know if other people have thoughts about that or not.
Cool. Uh, good contractor, could you identify yourself as, uh, yeah?
Sure. How you doing? My name is Greg Ellery.
Okay. Anybody else here that wasn't at the meet and greet?
Oh, um, I wasn't there.
Yeah.
My name's Ethel. Yeah, my name's Ethel Everett and I'm, um, a social worker for the Department of Children and Families. I'm also, um, the, um, chapter president for, um, five oh nine for my chapter for DCF and part of the Western Mass Area League Federation. So, um, I'm here because, um, it's really important, um, when we think about our community and we think about what I do as a social worker and getting staff, we, we have a staffing crisis right now. We also have a placement crisis that we're dealing with with our kids in the community. So we have a really difficult time when we talk about transitioning kids home, kids coming into care. But also my other passion is youth. I really, um, focus on like Springfield creating pathways for youth to get education and employment and to stay in our city where they go off to college to come back to Springfield and get back to Springfield. And I think because we don't have a lot of jobs that are, um, desirable for them, they leave, they leave and they don't come back to Springfield. So we're losing a lot of our kids who are born here or educated here, who have good degrees, who have a lot to offer the city and they're leaving.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody here, uh, who was either here last meeting or even the new, uh, people, um, Ethel or Cassandra? Any ideals or anything concrete that we could throw on the table, uh, to talk about today? Uh, in terms of a, we've spent time at the other one. It was a lot of bouncing around of descriptions of the problem, uh, employment, uh, childcare kind of things. Is anybody came prepared with a solution or a, that would take us down the road of a conversation about something concrete that might be need to be worked on, maybe on a macro level?
Sure, why not? I'll, I'll jump into this one. Um, I, I think that we all have a different, um, array of issues that we wanna bring to the table. So I think by putting out, I've been talking to Focus Springfield about having our meetings down there and giving us our own spotlight to discuss the issues that we think this day city or the committee should work on. So for us to pick one thing, uh, throughout the whole group, I think would make sense to make everything that we do a collaborative effort. So each person can get their own point and agenda across. So basically what I'm saying is, um, let's have a show at Focus Springfield to give everybody a chance to discuss their issues.
I, um, I, that was one of the things that I had a star next to, cause I thought that was, um, very prevalent for us to do if we decided to go that route. Um, because it should be all inclusive. So everyone has their, you know, ideas and what they want and things that they wanna do. And we could do, you know, highlight, so we could highlight DCF one week or highlight, you know, a different company another week and try to bring it all together. Cause we do have a lot of things that, you know, a lot of ways you can go with workforce development. So I thought that was a good idea, um, with the bi-weekly studio sessions that Greg proposed.
The last part I missed.
Was, um, the bi-weekly studio interviews, the email that he sent, uh, what his ideas.
Okay, well. Um, anybody else wanna comment on this before I jump in? Please, hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Chris Agnew and I had looked at that too. And I had had an idea that was similar to that. But what I was thinking is I had, uh, written down, you know, the different places, um, that deal with workforce, uh, development and labor around Springfield. And then I thought maybe we could, uh, ask them to prepare what they thought were the major things that the city could do to be helpful in this area and then have them all come in at once and give them their presentations in front of each other. So that maybe they could feed off of each other that way. That's all I have to contribute to that. So I have, I was foreseeing more of a, um, almost a symposium of, of people going around and giving their input, but the people who were working in this would be there to hear everybody else's so that they might be able to.
Like the mass higher.
Better.
Like a mass higher kind of organization?
Yes, yes. Where did I break them? Um, it's probably bad time to be looking, but I, I had, I had pulled out before the last meeting. I thought, well, let me just see what's already out here. And, uh, and, and there were, there were a few and I don't seem to have be able to pull them up. Oh, here they are. Uh, the farm worker services, the workforce development center at STIC, uh, mass higher department of career services, the city's workforce development. Bay State Springfield Educational Partnership, Mass Association of Community Colleges, Workforce Training and County Force Board and the Workforce Training Fund Programs from the Massachusetts.
So what I'm hearing is, is what you're saying, and this is what I, that the purpose of this group is to do exactly that, but maybe not on that level, but what to bring it back to a, closer to where, where the purpose of the committee, this committee is, is, is the ideal is for the fifteen people that were appointed to this committee to do exactly that to try to identify. But what I'm taking hearing is the suggestion and maybe at some point there is a citywide conclave or symposium where all of the different silos that do workforce development would be in a room at one time and probably would have access to it, whether it's to Focus Springfield or by invitation to discuss things. So. What I. Okay. So what I would put in the purpose of this committee wouldn't be to have the meeting at Focus Springfield. The purpose of this committee would be, that would be one of the ideals uh, to do that. And that would be one on our list is to create what we just described. And that's what we would be bringing back to the committee of the hall at the end of the year for them to do. So what we're trying to do and that's, so does that make sense to everybody?
They kinda collect information, but make it like a collaborative effort with the, um, the other workforce developments that are out there. Um, I guess that's what, um, you know, have math higher come and tell us what their workforce needs. Like we already have DCF here to tell us her workforce needs, um, and the other agencies. Is that like, kinda like where?
Well, yeah, I was commenting on, I thought the whole studio interview thing was a great idea. And I, I was just, uh, just so I wouldn't be repeating later on, my thought along those lines was to have instead of this committee with one group might be to have those groups speak with each other in the room.
Yes.
Well, guys, that, um, okay, can I jump in real quick, please?
Absolutely.
Um, I have talked to Steve Carey and George Anderson, who actually work at Focus Springfield. And, um, they're all for it. Um, I've known those guys for, for many years. And, um, I just wanted to just to bring it to the group and I guess we can break out in different emails and see what time fits everybody. But, um, the.
I get what you're saying, Chris. It's not access and that's not the, the issue, but the purpose of this committee is not to do that. It's, we're not here to, um, what you're describing is, is invalid ideal and it might be something we would do. But our job here is not for us to do that. We wanna get the ideals from us as the fifteen people that were appointed to this committee and then bring that back to the council as a whole. They would be the ones who would go to Focus Springfield and do that. So right now I got fifteen people that signed up or assigned to this committee. I'd like to get the fifteen people's ideals and get something concrete on a piece of paper or in a document that can be presented back to the whole. If I was to, nothing wrong with the ideal, but if we go have a meeting at Fordham, and the thing is, is there's at least ten, fifteen different organizations that were not listed just a minute ago. In fact, as the chair of the REO, Fiore's got his hands up. Um, we, um, I've had conversations earlier today with Home Cities developer, Tom Cabelman, who's now starting to build single family houses and he's looking for minority contractors. I had a meeting with a general contractor yesterday uh, with the solo painting and construction and they're looking to expand opportunities for minorities in the construction business. I had a meeting, uh, just yesterday with Fiore, who's about to speak for us, I believe. Fiore, you're still here? Yeah, I'm good. And so the thing is, is before we open it up and start looking for everybody to have, that's, I got it as an item number one. And that's what I'm looking for. That ideal of having a symposium, a conclave, the Department of Labor does that consistently. We may not have been gotten invitations to do that, but it sounds like the ideal is generally you're saying is, is that you would like all those different types, whether it's mass hire, all these different agencies, to have something that's public in a symposium, if not at Focus Springfield or wherever it could be broadcast, cause I've attended these types of things at stick, um, on the, uh, the not the college side, but on the other side, the workforce side of the place. Is that what I'm generally hearing?
Well, yes, um.
That was just like one of the ideas, I guess, that we can do.
And, um, I forgot to send Melvin the email. Melvin has not seen the, the email that we're discussing.
Yeah, and Greg, we'll talk later, me and you on that too.
Yeah.
That is okay. I, I know Greg well. Uh, and, but the thing is, is I'm just saying this is a my intention and what I was charged with by the president of the council was we were supposed to create things that want a micro level, macro level that would be brought back to be implemented at some point, whatever ideal that we have, like Greg has said, he knows the people at Focus Springfield. Yeah, we do too. This meeting is being recorded and through this by Focus Springfield.
Yes, it is.
So the point is, is though, what we wanna be able to do is go back to the committee of the whole, because whenever we, one of the things we've learned about those who've been involved with government, it's gotta be more than just a good ideal. Because when you take the good ideal and feel back, what's going to happen is law department's gonna get involved. You know, one of the people on here today just got chastised by the law department because he sent out a mass email and that was a violation of a meeting laws. So that's why it's important we do things and keep trying, for me to try to keep the structure of what was the intent there. Um, Fiore, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so, um, Melvin is exactly right. We're charged with coming up the ideas that hopefully the city can implement. Great idea. Uh, and with that said, it would kind of, you know, what I was gonna suggest is even something in the lines of, um, you know, we need, we need to get resources out to people. So what does each of those organizations do? What are they charged with and how can they help? For instance, around MGM, we had created, uh, trying to get people into the apprentice program, um, to have diversity and inclusion and residents on the, on the, on the MGM project as well as all future projects. Uh, we had to create a list of when everybody had open apprentice programs, what they consisted of, uh, you know, so there's a resource that, you know, we didn't have as a building trades, we put together and the shame of it is I, you know, is it being sent to high schools still? Is it being used out there when people are looking for work? Uh, you know, high school is just an example that, you know, I get kids coming out of vocational school that might wanna get into a building trades. Well, I don't even know if the high school has it, to be honest with you. So I guess I just inform myself to get it to our vocational schools. Um, but you know, what is each of those organizations just described? I am on mass hire and I can tell you what we do. But again, it'd be a good idea, you know, we have different people come in and like Greg said, we, we talk, uh, they give us presentations uh, about different fields and, you know, so that's all set in good, but it's, that's jumping way ahead. What can we do as a board? Uh, and I think getting all those resources to hand out to everybody and anybody that potentially could be looking for work to know what industry is, what they're about, what they consist of, what the average pay is, things of that nature. And, and I don't know if that's out there, to be honest with you.
So, so more or less like a resource book, pamphlet more or less, what you're saying for her?
Yeah, I mean, so again, she just described eight org, uh, twelve organizations. I think I know of about three. Uh, so again, I couldn't tell you what the other seven or eight do. Uh, I'm sure they do great work. The problem is they're a secret. Uh, so if you're not, you know, how does the public know about that stuff? Uh, if, if we don't, you know, if there's nothing out there to handle. So, you know, a resource guide of helping people to get, uh, learn about different professions and jobs and in that nature might not be a bad idea. That's a lot of work to compile, to be honest with you, to put all that together.
Right. So basically like the same MGM blueprint, but this time for like a greater scale. Basically.
Greg, uh, if you hold off a second, I wanna get Arian, but I just wanted to make everybody aware. Uh, I hope you guys are hearing everything well enough. I closed the door a minute ago. And if you notice, I just talked about the law department and open meeting laws. We can't close the door. It's a violation of open meeting law. So I hope that the technical sound or whatever isn't an issue, but the staff just opened the door and reminded me that we can't close the door. But they're gone for the day, so hopefully it's not any side noise. Okay?
So Melvin, uh, listen, if people wanna know what happened, I responded to a group email and threw some information in there that uh, again, don't respond and start talking about what we should be doing, uh, and without, you know, more than two people, three people constitutes a, a, you know, uh, or I don't know how many would be for this board, but you really, you really shouldn't respond hit all. And then I went to talking a little bit too much and I violated, uh, the open meeting law. So you need to be cognizant of what you're sending. You can ask to get stuff on an agenda or pick a topic. You just can't go into any details at that point. So I did a boo boo. So it, it educates everybody at that point, what we're not supposed to be doing.
Well, um, and, um, Arian, Ariane?
Hi, it's Ariane. You can call me Ari.
Ari, okay.
Um, Mitri, well, I was there at the first meeting, um, but I wasn't there for the second one that followed.
This is, this is the second one. I, the, the first.
The other one didn't happen, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had to move it. This is number two. You're right on time.
Awesome. Um, I wanted to just share some ideas that I do have. I know someone, I don't remember your name. I apologize. Someone who's there in person mentioned that a lot of young people, um, eventually leave the area of Springfield for a career, um, and they go, go to bigger cities. Uh, so one of the things I think is, you know, what do we have in like upcoming industries? So like tech industries, one group I really think is amazing is Tech Foundry. Um, and you know, they have, they do a bootcamp where they get you your base level that you need with IT. Um, and then you're able to get a job after that. They help you with an internship. So I think Tech Foundry is a really great group. Um, I am hosting a creative industries hiring event at the Mass Mutual Center on June twenty fourth, and the goal is to collect like just different industries who are looking, um, for people who are good in technology and then different creative roles as well. Uh, so I do think that's a, you know, like a piece of it is bringing all these people to the, the right places. I know we have other hiring events, but another thing I would like to do moving forward is a hiring event for like future industries. So something that's really big right now is machine learning, AI coding. And I did have a conversation with someone, uh, someone from Tech Foundry about how they're looking to get some additional funding so they can do more programs that are geared towards things like that, um, as opposed to just doing like base level in getting into IT as a technical assistant type of role. So I think that maybe tho, those are some areas that we could try to kind of rally around, invest in and support, um, so that when pe, young people are like, okay, I don't wanna stay in Springfield, cause this doesn't have the right career path with me. Well, if we turn it into Springfield will actually give you like help you catapult into an industry of the future, jobs that are really gonna be available ten and twenty years from now. It could kind of change that narrative.
Makes sense.
Just wanted to add, um, I know Fiore was talking about a resource guide. I think it's more of a connection, like for, for us at DCF, we have kids who age out. And if we had a connection to connect them with something and they age out as far as a job or career, um, you know, um, it would be better than a resource guide. Cause we can give them a resource guide, but if we don't connect them with somebody and like that can speak for them or be able to say like, you know, this is someone or somewhere where you wanna be, it, it gets lost. Um, kinda, it's, it's just kind of a piece of paper. And I think there needs to be more of a personal connection. Um, you know, like for folks in certain industries, you're looking for someone, you can call someone at the department, connect the youth with a job, connect the youth with an, um, and, um, apprenticeship program. It's different because we, that makes a difference in how people move into a job. They have that connection and there's someone to speak to instead of a piece of paper or book that they're looking to and you're going to this place to apply. Um, it, it just has better outcomes.
Well, I agree with you and I'll just kinda like to comment in terms of that. It's always impersonal. Uh, it's always better when you know somebody. Uh, my mother always told me as a child growing up that if I went through life trying to kick doors down, my leg would fall off and the door would still be closed. She says, you build relationships so people open doors for you. And in fact, uh, I think by this type of gathering, just the fifteen of us, whoever's here today and the those who, you know, will be a part of it. At the end of this process, we're gonna know each other and we're gonna know more about each other. I can, Fiore and I's relationship goes back over fourteen years. We started the, uh, we were both the only two original members of the REO. And I can't tell you the diff, there's a big difference when I say to somebody, go, uh, the iron workers, uh, if you don't mind heights and you want a good, but you don't wanna, you know, you wanna college education without the, the picks, uh, the cost of it and wanna be able to earn a salary that you can buy a home with. Go see my friend, Fiore Grissette, who has apprentice programs for that. I think what you're saying is, is exactly that. Um, the thing is, is you don't know him. Dean Ethea, I believe is the president of the union. When you're saying to UCFW or, uh, the laborers union or any union of carpenters have apprentice programs. And I know for a decade plus, I've been encouraging women to go into construction. I love CNAs and I appreciate the work they do. And I know they kept me alive, but they usually can't afford to buy a house on a CNA salary. And there's work to be done to raise their salaries to a standard that they can live with. But I'm also saying if that's not your, that's a good entry level type of position where you can get training. But if it's not your cup of tea, okay, I've got a young lady across the table from you here who has a trucking company. So those who are interested in, you know, it, it matters and you can talk to somebody and tell you the inches and outs of trucking. So I get what you're saying. I think the ideal of creating, and I'm writing the, you know, I got, I feel good about the fact that we're talking about creating a book with. But the book may not be something we would give to you, one of your clients. The book would be something you would have, because do you know all these other organizations other than the ones that this young lady next to you actually listed? Because there's a whole bunch more that I just had to roll off the top of my head. And I know, you know, there's work, I've been hoping CDC is doing some work, uh, Andrew Malindo's, the Latino Chamber has some programs down there. There's so many, we don't know what we don't know until we know it. And all of the carpenters, the carpenters, the UCFWs, the iron workers, electrical, plumbing, so all those unions have apprentice programs with empty seats. And so, but if you don't know who to clap and call, then it's different than when you just say, well, the plumbers are looking for apprentices. This is an opportunity for you. So I think I'm hopeful it ended up by this, we will have personal relationships for those of you in the fields where you're actually face to face with the people will be able to say, oh, you can call Melvin Edwards. He'll, he'll, he'll connect you with somebody or you can call Fiore or Dean or, um, some of the other people that, you know, do this type of work of actually putting people to work. Does that sound agreeable to everybody? Uh, kinda? And I'm kinda trying to like keep it.
Melvin, if, if I can just add, I'm secretary treasurer of UFCW for the people I haven't met. Uh, pleasure being on this committee. I appreciate everything we're doing. You know, part of our, part of this is health, safety and pay. I mean, new companies coming into this, this region. We, that's, that's our agenda, health, safety and pay. And everything else that's being said here is very important. I agree a hundred percent with everything. And I just wanted to clear up, I'm not the president. I wanna get back to Jeff Jones. I'm claiming to be president. So.
And I meant, I meant no respect or added stress to that.
I know. It's just, you're a great guy.
Uh, I'm struggling with it. It's just, I mean, some, I mean, some, that's my shortcoming, but it was, uh, it was meant as a positive, um.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
You know, we have a representative, she's not here today, but we do have a representative from the carpentry union and I know they do work and I'm, I'm in constant comedy, I just the teachers association and then you just, uh, last week, uh, we had the healthcare workers, I mean, the, um, daycare workers striking up in, um, Springfield Partners. So I did, I believe I got something a couple of days ago for the nurses that are about having a work, some work issues and stuff. So it will befuddle sometime. But the ideal is, is that is a very good ideal, especially, you know, when we're talking about young people who don't have a, a wealth of experience either in the workforce or interacting with people. And, um, you know, one of the things that I wanna kind of, what do you, I mean, what are some of the, if we got young people who need a job, they don't know who even go ask for a job. Are they prepared to go? Do they know how to ask for a job? Is that a reasonable question to throw up to the table?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, it's, yes, sir. Can I just, let me just, this is Tammy and I will jump in because I am with the, the eleven ninety-nine SEIU Union. And I'd like all the things that we have here, cause just like Melvin said, you know, taking different, um, programs so you can educate yourself, cause we're finding right now our healthcare workers, like you said, are struggling. Um, here we talking about, we have fought for the paid family medical leave with them, Chelsea, for them. But they're struggling with their wages right now, trying not to become homeless, struggling to feed their children. And right now we are in a contract negotiations right now for all of them, trying to put forth what is important to all of them, um, as well. So we we're just totally doing a lot of work, but like you said, these programs, these apprenticeship programs are really good. And we have kids, our kids are about to graduate. We need to have pay, you know, stuff for them to see what they would like to do. I have a great niece because of her teacher. Um, has taken her to Bay State so she can fill out, cause she wants to be a CNA, but she had someone that was guiding her. You know, not everybody knows the connections and what they're, what they're wanna do. So that is so important to be able to have open doors. We know that we have a lot of programs in Springfield for the housing things, for people becoming homeless. We direct We direct information to our healthcare workers of what they need because they're calling us for everything. And also, you know, the health insurance as well. People are struggling with that. So there was a lot of stuff that was left out, like Mass Health. Um, we, as we all know, COVID is about to end. There were a lot, a lot of people that received letters um, saying, okay, you were eligible for Mass Health during COVID, you are not now. So they're looking for other support systems and every people to talk to of how they can get the health insurance. So what we did is we created. Um, we have a person, Melissa Montron, at Mass Health, who was helping us with our members to make sure that they get health insurance. And there's a lot of programs here. And and when she was talking about, I was the one that said it. Both my daughters both have criminal justice degrees but wanted to do something else. I talked to them about the carpenters program, about what to do because the thing is, is one works in Connecticut. She's doing parts in their building car parts. The other one just got another job. Um, where she went to North, she went to, um, she's in North Hampton, but she went to another company where they're doing police parts. So they're venturing out, trying to figure out what they do. I have a nephew who loves um computer stuff, loves to do these things and there's no programs. So even able to get the documentation, what I can share and say, okay, here Brady, here's something that you can take and do that we've learned through our program. We need to keep our children here. And I've been working so hard trying to do that with my children, but also making sure that our healthcare workers are growing. Um, and they're being able to, you know, feed their children, pay their bills. The struggles out here are real. Um, so I could always keep a list of the programs. So she gave you the list of the programs here that I sent off to our healthcare workers um, here all the time. And so I I'm just really glad that we are putting together something here, figuring out how we can continue to build Springfield, keep everyone here, you know, and let it come here because they're working on the roads right now. But why are our families moving? Because the wages, it is what is cold moving everyone. It is what they are paying. And so this is what my two daughters said, mom, I can't find anything in Springfield that's going to pay me over eighteen dollars an hour. That's why they ventured off, ventured off. And so we need to build on that. I've talked to them about build, you know, hey, go on and do some construction. Women can do it too. You know, so I'm trying to, you know, grow the, you know, teach them that there are other things, but also I have great nieces who are about to graduate and trying to figure out what they want to do. So the other one was lucky because she had a mentor that said, okay, you took your C N A program, you're about to graduate, let's go to Bay State. So she had a support system, but not everyone has a support system. So I just wanted to share that. That's why I'm really digging on the information because when I go back with my healthcare workers, I always get information and ask the members, especially our Springfield, what is it that you'd like to see done here? What, you know, what is important to you? So, you know, building these, getting all this information also helps me help them. And I can share what we're doing as our union to help our healthcare workers. So I just wanted to share that.
And if I could just right on that, that sentiment. I mean, we have uh, the majority of buses in Springfield, Mass. Uh, we have first student, uh, L P V C, P V T A. They pay very, very well. Hey, some people might not want to make that a career. But they're looking for help, their union jobs, they got health benefits, twenty five, thirty dollars an hour. And that's why I'm, like all of us are pushing the union, the word here. And this group, least, you know, that's the purpose I'm here for. Safety, health and and wages and there's a lot of jobs out there. If anyone wants to reach out to us at U F C W, we can, the company pays for their training and it's good money and good benefits. And they can move on from there, so.
Thank you, Dean. Uh, Ari, did you hand up? I see, is that? Go ahead, Ari.
There are a couple of things. Um, I really, I like what Tammy mentioned about the fact that there's, when her, I think you're saying it was your nieces were thinking about, oh, I can't stay here because there's nothing that's going to pay me over eighteen dollars an hour. And then I know Dean just mentioned like there's really good paying jobs, but maybe they're like driving, you know, like large vehicles. So that's not really for everybody. Um, and I had a question for you, Melvin, like what do you feel like is the wh- where is the gap when it's like, okay, there's like minimum wage starting jobs here? And then if you're like in insurance or you're working at M G M or something like a few han- handful of the larger companies, you can get a better salary, but like what do you, what do you think from your experience being in the city council, like what do you think is the gap as far as like why we don't have businesses here that have that in between pay?
Wow. Well, I'm born and raised in Springfield and I'm kind of like a local history kind of guy that goes all the way back to the establishment of this new nation. When George Washington asked Congress to fund the uh, our two, four arsenals and they funded two. One being Harpens Ferry, Virginia, uh, which was the start of the Civil War, so uh, and then of course Springfield, Mass. Springfield, uh, I had a friend many years ago who came from Boston and said Springfield was a type of place uh, in the late sixties where you could quit a job, a good manufacturing job on a Tuesday and be working by Thursday. When they closed the Armory in nineteen sixty eight, nineteen sixty nine, that was the start of our economic decline. Um, up until that time, there is documentation. I was the gentleman who started the French group with the National Armory. They tried to encourage more local people to know the history beyond the manufacture of guns at the state campus. But they were hiring people of color as far back as nineteen oh eight to work there. Women started taking over jobs after the, when World War Two. When men started going off to war and they didn't have enough jobs, they had openings. So women were making livable wages that men's wages, uh, you know, we know that there's a wage disparity between men and women. Um, so not to go too far off the chain thing, but to try to answer your question, we were a manufacturing hub. We were, uh, we were never Boston, but presidents did come to Springfield. We are the site of, at one time, we were, we had more manufacturing first that were either from Springfield or the surrounding area than any other place in the world, at least any other place in the country. So the toilet flusher, the steering wheel, the air racing industry, air brakes, um, crescent wrench, monkey wrench, the first dictionary. When you go to the Wood Museum, you'll see the history of industry that actually came out of the Springfield area. Uh, some people will say that the most important manufacturing contribution to the industrial revolution was the cotton gin. And I would suggest to people that it was in fact the Blanchard Lake because the Blanchard Lake allowed the North and Springfield, Massachusetts to produce more rifle stocks in a matter of months than the South was able to produce in the entire Civil War. So, um, we are an industrial complex and even up to this day, there is a wide gap between the southern state, the southern agricultural states which also had contributed to the split in as a new nation and the northern industrials. What, what has happened is that gap between the North and the South and industry has changed. People are going south for a lot of reasons. In fact, because houses are cheaper to build and to acquire down there, but the wages are also lower. Yous are exist all over the country, but you have right to work states and you have states where um the regulatory authorities are less. We're in New England, our utility costs are higher. So there's a lot of conflict. It's not as simple as any one factor. But starting in nineteen sixty eight, that's when our manufacturing jobs started to move away. And it would replace our manufacturing jobs were the social service jobs. Be, you know, the thing is, is if um, when I was a kid, we didn't know what B H N was. We didn't know what C H D was. And if you go down Main Street into that area where it'd be, where C H N, C H D and B H N are, those were all factories or majority of, or many of those were factories that contributed to the war, war, World War One, Korean War. The, some of the parts that were dropped on Hiroshima were manufactured right here in Springfield. If you go down into Connecticut to Pratt and Whitney, the industrial complex. And if you, I can remember many years ago, being told in the Cold War that if there was ever a nuclear war, when we used to think of Russia in the old version of what the, you know, communists before the wall, uh, the wall came down, the Reagan thought, tear that wall down. Um, Springfield was a nuclear hit site. It still is because of our proximity to Westover, to Barnes Air Force Base, to Bradley International. But also the fuel lines that run underneath the city of Springfield because of Mass Mutual. Uh, our relationship to what used to be Coltsville, to um Savage Arms and Westfield. The blast light would be large enough to damage this nation historically, so. But the jobs that used to be manufacturing jobs, the Uniroils, which now are people, all the, all the people remember is the Fist Hire Company. Uh, Monsanto, all those companies have gone and they've been replaced by jobs that are valuable for our mental health, our physical health and things of that nature. But those jobs don't pay with those manufacturing jobs. So that's kind of contributed to the gap, in my opinion. But I don't know who raised hand up first, but Ari, you want to say something else?
Yeah, I'll be super quick because I see two people have their hands up, but I I appreciate you giving the detail and the history of that. I think one thing is, like you said, we had a lot of jobs in manufacturing. I feel like we need another thing that we are known for as a hub, which is why I'm going to continue to push stuff in like the technology space. Um, but also to what Dean was saying about the roles that we have, uh, that are driving roles, P V T A, Peter Pan. For those jobs, I truly believe you have to get kids when they're young to get excited about those types of roles. Because after a certain point, like when I think of a job like that and certain people I know my age, they're like, oh, that's, that's stressful. I can't imagine being on the road for that many hours. I think we really need to be able to get into like the elementary schools and be like, look at how cool this job is, like, look at the money they're able to make and influence them at a younger age so that they can start to build a mindset that gets them excited for that, but.
You, you said the magic word, you said influence because our, the thing is, is I, I go back to Texas Instruments, okay, and I can remember when Nintendo, I mean, not to Nintendo, um, um, Palm was the thing. Now, the same guys that there are, those that are manning those drones are are teenagers or people within just, just two, three years from being out of high school. They're the best ones that drop and working those drones because of their gamesmanship. And I think I I can remember having a conversation as a father of six. Uh, and I got fifteen grandchildren, I got four grandchildren, watching my kids grow through the computer age of all that stuff. What became cool for them was not working in a tire factory or working in any type of factory. It was, I can use to remember trying to say them, um, you're all not good enough to be in the N B A or the N F L. And so many of our young people are influenced to believe that the way for them to have a living in the future is going to be through entertainment and the entertainment industry, but there's so much competition for that. But Dean's, uh, you know, suggestion that there's jobs in that, in the thing, in that. Uh, Fiore can tell you, um, every union has apprentices and they're all looking for people. And at years ago, because of federal mandates, that there was a great desire for women to be involved. And so you, women could actually get quicker jobs, but most of those higher paying jobs and even the tech jobs, because they are at a computer screen, you don't have to you, you, you can be, you can have, you can set them up pretty much anywhere. The medical technology that does the machines, that make the real fine machines, that still exists. And like my brother is machinist, he can quit a job on Tuesday and get another one on Thursday because he can program the computer that does the work, that makes, does that type of manifest. So those jobs still exist. But the young people don't think of that as cool and that influences, who are influencing our young people are not making C N As a job that they want to see as their future. The Springfield Police Department, every police department, Chickapi is giving out what, five thousand, twenty thousand dollar bonuses? It's a good job. It's one, you could actually earn close to a million dollars across your career as a Springfield police officer and retire in your forties. Department of Corrections, all those types of jobs. Uh, Greg or, I mean, you guys can find it out. Greg or Fiore, one of you guys kind of say something here.
I'll let Mr. Fiore go because he's a lot older than me.
So just want to give you guys, so one of the problems that I see, I, so I sit on the Springfield redevelopment authority. And I don't know if you realize this, go look around, drive around the city, look at all the vacant buildings, all the lots that we have available. We are primed for economic development out here in Western Massachusetts. We're fortunate enough to get the train car manufacturing facility, great jobs, actually union jobs at that place, uh, makes a good money. Um, you've got chip manufacturing plants starting to develop, great uh, uh, job. We've got pharmaceuticals, Worcester is seeing the boom right now. Um, we, people need to realize got a lot more land, it's cheaper, uh, you know, it, it, it's easier to get through the permitting process. The problem is, you know, we're enticing some of these big box type uh, um, warehouse type places, great, good, good paying jobs inside. Uh, not all of them, but there are some good ones. You've got the trucking industry that now takes over at that point. Um, my only point is, we've got to do a better job of selling, uh, you know, to, to these manufacturers as well as industries that Springfield is the next place that you want to be and and start producing these uh, buildings out here. As far as, um, you talked about pay, Melvin. Uh, an hour makes forty bucks an hour. Uh, if you were a woman, you'd make about seventy five thousand dollars with another forty four, forty to fifty thousand dollars in benefits. So as an ironworker, you have the potential to make um, about a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, women have an advantage over men.
That's, that's a year, right, Fiore?
Yes, there's a mandate almost, God, to put women on them. So if you're a woman in the construction industry, you're going to make a lot more than the guys. Average guy makes about fifty grand with four, thirty five in benefits because we only work about seven months a year. But because of the high demand on jobs for women, uh, they're going to work eleven months out of the year versus the seven.
And think about what I said is, you know, I'm in reference to the police, but that's a matter of fact. I said a million dollars, so ten years, a hundred thousand dollars working, that's a million dollars. And then the thing is, is if you do, if you double that, so you, to the two million part, twenty year, you're at the retirement age or you're in, you're, you're in, you're not ready to retire and wait the economy is, but you have the potential for a future retirement that where you can be very comfortable. I mean, I came up, uh, I grew up on Wellington Street. Uh, out of the seven or eight guys that I grew up with in the late sixties and early seventies, five of them went to the Connecticut to the Department of Corrections to work. None of them had to work past forty five. And they're earning, and Connecticut at that time, they retired with a hundred percent of their last three years earnings. So they did a lot of overtime. And they live in real life, were young enough to still go off and do something else. Uh, I don't make a lot of money as a city council, I only make twenty thousand, but I worked for twenty one years at D M R. And retired when I was forty nine years old. I retired because my wife got put on the shift away from me. She was on Tuesday, Wednesdays, I had Saturdays, Sundays. She's on second, I'm on first, loved her more to my next breath, so I'd rather be poor than have money. But the point is, is that I was young, able to get a retirement from that and be able to go into politics, make a little bit of money there. And between the two of them, at sixty three, I'm not, I'm okay. I can pay all my bills and if I owe you five dollars, I'm gonna pay you five dollars, so. Uh, Greg, I see you've been patiently waking, waiting. And uh, it's not about how old and I know, or who looks better, so you know. But go ahead, Greg.
So I have two quick points I want to bring up. Um, no one mentioned anything about clean energy. That's the new um, workforce that's coming up. Um, that I've been looking into a lot with um, E V um, car machines and also uh, wind tunnels and solar power and uh, solar energy. That's a new big uh, uh, going thing also. And as far as um, Fiore mentioned something about um, uh, that we have many lots and many, I don't want to say blighted properties on record, but um, a, a lot of work that can be done on properties in the city of Springfield. So once these people do not have the proper training to get these jobs, I think that's what's really holding them back even more. So if we can find somewhere to get them some training along with the information, I think that I help them.
I have some questions on, on the, um, on the vacant lots. I was wondering, um, are there vacant lots that the city's got the right to go in and and fix them up or is there a situation where there needs to be some sort of arrangement or incentive for the owners of these vacant lots to want to fix them up? I was uh, looking at the clean energy, sounds like it would go a whole lot along with the tech foundry um, comments that Ollie was making. And um, I want to, I, one of my big hopes is, uh, what Fiore is talking about is um bringing more good paying jobs to the area, but it just seems to me when you see employers deciding on where they want to go, they're looking at amenities and there's such a problem with the the school reputation, the crime reputation and the public. the school reputation, the crime reputation and the public transportation reputation. I'm not going to say whether they're good, bad or indifferent, but they've got a very bad reputation. And if you're a potential employer, I I think, you know, if the city could come up with a a package of uh, you know, addressing those concerns somehow or spinning things better on those three areas. I think we'd have a better chance of invite of getting new businesses in.
Well, I I I kind of agree with that. I I had, I I had an opportunity yesterday in Northampton to speak to a group of people. And in the course of doing it, one of the things they kept talking about was the tofu curtain that exists. Um, I've lived in Springfield my whole life, so um, there's no place I'm not comfortable. I mean, I integrated Washington Street School probably in nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight. We don't think of segregation in this area, but we know, in fact, um, Council President Letterman and myself met with Peter Gallerati a couple of few years ago and we, when he was still with Wayfinders. Uh, and we asked for a housing study. The housing study talked about the inequities and the issues related to the housing disparities that exist. But one of the things that was most interesting was outside of Springfield, how segregated we are as a, as a state and as a city and as well at Western Mass of the community. And when we hear the word segregation, we always think about it in terms of the South versus the North. But when you go into Agawam and they're ninety-eight percent white and you go into Islam Meadow and they're ninety-eight percent white and the concentrations of minorities are starting to, you know, in Chicopee used to be like eighty percent, ninety percent there. We're now in the Chicopee, uh, and if you go into West Springfield, there were once, it was a time back when it was this population. Those shifts and changes, but those are some of the things that are realities, but to bring it back to the fact that the point of marketing, I'll I'll admit as somebody who was part of the government, we have done a poor job of marketing ourselves. Some of the things that you just described in terms of our schools, I have an article at home from nineteen oh eight that talked about the Springfield school system was not only a model for the state, but entirety of country and possibly the world because of how good our school system was. I don't think it's that much bad, is our school system is really that bad. I think what it is, is that if you and I have this conversation with people, I said to a lady was criticizing Springfield who lived in Ludlow a few years ago and I had, and she was telling me how bad Springfield schools were. And I said to her, I said, where's your shelter? And she said, my home? I said, no, where's your your homeless shelter? She says, we don't have one in Ludlow. And I said, okay, but we have several in Springfield. So how many kids do you estimate or guess that are showing up in school in Ludlow who slept in a car last night? How many were sleeping on somebody's couch or on a floor? How many young ladies that are sitting there in class and dozing off or not paying attention that were sexually assaulted the night before because that was better than what she might have had to deal with in another environment, but it kept a shelter over her head. So the thing is, is
And don't forget about the kids that come through our door.
And yes, that's what I'm saying. And and the thing, because the point is, is when I was talking about the manufacturer shift from manufacturing to whatever, we got to recognize if you need services, the reason we have the methadone clinics in Springfield and not in Agawam and Long Meadow, it's not because those addiction issues don't exist there. But they come here because this is where the resources are. One of the things that I'm hearing about consistently is the panhandlers. They're coming here because this is where it's, it's legal across the country to panhandle. The the Supreme Court has ruled that as part of free speech, they cannot knock on your window and they can't disrupt traffic, but they have a right to be there as part of your free speech. They're congregating in Springfield because of the volume of traffic, because of the resources, and this is where they need to be. So if you need services, if you're just, if you're a twelve-year-old or ten-year-old kid who just got out of a refugee camp in Cambodia or in Southern Africa or in Saharan Africa, and you're coming fortunate to get to this country, you're probably not going to end up in the never been in school, don't know how to speak the language, you're probably not going to end up in the Islam Meadow school system. You're probably gonna be in Springfield. So can we do better with marketing? I think that's one of the things that we should be able to do. We need to be able to identify industries. Now, one of the things, and and maybe somebody, some of you guys can kind of agree with me, I think is it an issue, we can only, what is perceived may not be real. So that's one of the things that maybe the advertising, I know twenty-two and forty does us no service, does a dip service when they broadcast every assault or everything that's negative. And in many cases, if you listen real closely, sometimes the assault thing is in another community. But because they had to go to Bay State, they'll list it as Springfield. Or because of district court that serves the entire area is for Springfield. So sometimes you don't even spell it out. But the other thing is, is when, you know, my church is in Islam Meadow and my pastor used to talk about the fact in his town, when something happens, their police department is not eager and they don't send out press releases on their negativity or the things, unless it's something big or they can't control, but they try to control the narrative of their community. So marketing is one of the things. But are there some things that we could do to attract? Is it more, is it more than just trying to attract the type of business that Ari suggested? That we need to do or tax incentives, uh, making the business easier to do business in Springfield?
We can try to help, try to, am I muted? Yeah, um, I think, I think we could try to help some of the local um, citizens who would like to produce these businesses themselves, help them start these businesses. Help Ari start an A I business or something like that, you know what I mean? Try to bring it back within the community itself. Offer um, to see that some of these things do happen.
I I was thinking, as far as marketing, you know, there's some positive things you could call like diversity, the diversity in the Springfield community.
And look at that, it's a positive. It's a, it's a selling point.
Rather than defending against all the negatives, you know, just, it might be worthwhile to figure out some, some other, some other way.
Well, the reality is, is that we are part of the same area that we don't seem to have, I remember having this conversation with uh, Catherine Gibson, used to be my secretary when I was president of the Maple High Six Corner Neighbor Council, and she was the head mistress at McDuffie. And I remember she had just came back from a recruiting trip in South Korea. And it was just, this was in the time leading up before they moved to Hadley. And what she was talking about was, she said that Google was just killing her school. Because people in South Korea could Google Springfield and look at the entire area around there. And at that time, I believe they were charging fourteen thousand dollars for the elementary school education at McDuffie's. But McDuffie's students were expected upon graduation to go to Brown, to Harvard, to Yale, to William and Mary, uh, Smith College. Without, with or without ac- with academic scholarships, but not necessarily the need for financial scholarship. The point being is, is that we have never had a problem in Springfield, in the area around Springfield, recruiting kids from around the world to come here to be educated. And the education that you get at A I C, Western New England and Springfield College, Western New England was just recognized as one of the best law schools in the country. So we're, they're coming here, but to the point that whoever made about the fact that they are leaving, that's where, how do we stop the bleeding? Because they're coming here to be educated. While they're here, are they not being entertained or do they not see those four years that they're here being educated? Any reason for them to put down roots and share that talent that they got, so.
Internships, they're not, there's not the connection for them to have internships and move them directly into jobs. I know we struggle, um, we have a partnership with Springfield College, um, social work, but that's because we know the the dean, so it's like, so that, so that connection. And it's like, okay, so you said, he sends our students and we sent our employees there to get their masters, so there's that connection that's kind of made that to kind of help, but internships are very difficult um, for college students to get internships. And we're not, a lot of employees are not open their doors to to accept them. But also, um, just kind of thinking about marketing, um, we were talking about, what is it? The focus Springfield, but what about highlighting some of the good things about Springfield when we're talking about our schools, the accomplishments that our kids are doing in 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 sports and academically. No one knows when our kids are doing something well academically unless you see a blurb because some kid got nineteen scholarships. Right, but it's not, it's not on a regular basis. And it's like, they have to do it on their own. We're not like automatically doing it and automatically having the school do that to highlight the successes of our students. You know, how intelligent they are, how, how, um, you know, they're, they're talented musically, you know, athletically, all different kind of ways. We have a lot of talent in Springfield, but it's like you never know about it. It's, it's, it's a hidden, it's a hidden treasure. You know, when you talk, when you go somewhere and you say where you're from, you say Massachusetts, people automatically say Boston, you say Western Mass, they say Worcester. You know, um, and then you say Springfield, oh, they think about just the basketball Hall of Fame. That's not what we're all about. You know, um, and then when talent comes here for, you know, um, we we've lost that because we do have the basketball Hall of Fame. They go to Mohegan or Fox Business now to do all these different things. So we've lost a lot of those things that were happening here. And we need to kind of grasp that back and 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 bring some of that back to Springfield and highlight our talent here, um, so that um, they're not looking at the per capita crime that happens in Springfield as that's all we're about.
Well, I I, you did blood leads, so media always grabs a safe to that, so, um, and and you're absolutely, I I just always remind people that any given day, there's more good people and good young people doing good deeds. But bad people by their actions will demand their attention and they will swallow all the air. So Cassandra, do you have one to jump in here?
Yes, um, so I just have like a thought. Um, so I know we're talking about like how we need to get like the younger people getting into jobs and um, stuff like that. I know one of the issues too is transportation that sometimes um, they have. And I was wondering if, um, like if it was possible to do like a driver's ed course in like, in schools. The reason why I say that is because I used to live in Jersey and I went to high school there and they had driver's ed. And a lot of the kids that already were, by the time, by the time they graduated, they already had their their um, license. And half of them already worked, like they already had jobs and it was because they were able to um, have their own transportation. Like they were able to drive, like if that makes sense. The reason why I say that is because I didn't get my license until I was like twenty-two. And it was just because, you know, parents are like always, they're busy, they're not able to like, you know, give the support um, to their children that they um, need. So I don't know, I think I just thought maybe that can just be an idea, like something, I don't know.
I hope that's, uh, I hope Dean's um, kind of, I hope that's tickling his ear as a possibility because the many of the people he represents with his union are drivers and it's a benefit goes both ways on that because not only do the kids get that, but you can tell when you're driving around Springfield who went to driving school and who didn't. They know how to steer the wheel, but they don't know how to turn light.
Yeah.
I took my drivers and at trade. And I was going there. And I, mine was at Technical High School, the same year that I actually um, registered a vote and I was eighteen years old and I haven't stopped. Never missed an election. Melvin, did you go to Homer Street School?
Yes, for a couple of years, uh, me and Mr. Levine. Me and Mr. Levine didn't get along real well, so they had to make an alter of the code of the user grammar.
School in Massachusetts.
Chelsea, you have uh, got your, you've figured out, your hands up, Chelsea.
I figured out how to do it. Thank you, Ari. So I work for the library department and I'm the president of our chapter of the union, Ask Me Fifteen Ninety-Six. And so um, in April, a bunch of city unions went to the city council meeting speak out, and I encourage you to maybe look at this on the YouTube if you missed it. Um, to talk about how we don't have paid family medical leave. And so like while all of these like really big, great ideas are excellent, I'm wondering if we need to also talk about like retaining the people we currently have because there are vacancies at all nine of our locations. Um, when I was at the speak out, somebody from the police department, we Melvin, you mentioned the police department earlier, he was talking about how um, he was like battling cancer and had to save his sick days for like the end of the year to then tack on to the next year so that he could have a surgery done as he's, you know, getting sicker with cancer. So if we can't have, like if we don't have good benefits and we're not keeping people here, then like that's a whole issue in and of itself. And so I think thinking for the future is great, but also like what do we do, what can we do right now to keep the people who are already here?
Chelsea, your concern is legitimate, is something that has been recognized. Um, Council President Letterman and I knew that was going to be brought up before the meeting and I maybe when when you did come to speak out, um, and I believe that I am accurate in stating that we have the city council, Springfield City Council did make a request and passed a uh, through the council, a uh, request to the city auditor to start the process of telling us um, just looking at that, I believe, pay, I mean, uh, family leave is legal in Massachusetts, but what is, we were shocked to find out that many city employees and many employees uh, were not actually, they're uh, not paid for it. So that is, and that's what you're talking about right now, but it is, we've made a request. And the thing is, is to be frank and honest with you, the city council, and that that's something that, you know, is being worked on.
Right. So I guess like bigger picture too, like that was my example, but like what else can we do? Like where else are we lacking in our current employment, like with even just the city of Springfield, if that makes sense?
We can't hear you, Melvin.
You can't hear me?
Oh, no, the sound was cut out. Yeah, I didn't hear it.
Um, the thing is, is I can't tell you where the gaps are. That's what you could tell us is where the gap. Um, but I don't know where they are, but I'm interested to hear. I didn't know about the family leave not being paid. I knew the state passed a law that said that, you know, family leave was legal in Massachusetts. Assume that most companies and everybody was doing it, but I am not shocked to find out they weren't because I can tell you fourteen years ago when I came into the council, without saying too much, um, I realized very quickly within a matter of a couple of months um, that there was a disparity between the female administrators that are assistants that did the paperwork for the city council than the males who did similar work. And I just was kind of shocked because government changes laws and we are, there was a lot of conversations about uh, pay inequity in the private sector. But if government can't do it right, then how do you expect the private sector to do it right? Um, and I'm gonna say, um, we've been here for just about, just over an hour. Uh, and I don't want to take too much more of my people's time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Greg next. And anybody else who want to throw their hand out there or have something to say, we're gonna try to wind it down within the next uh, five minutes. So Greg, go ahead and tell you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned earlier when the meeting first began, how you were um, talking to several people about um, minority contractor issues. Um, I want to know, would this be a subject that we can basically try to um, discuss and bring to um, a city council about getting more local people like the unity you just mentioned about retaining people who are here in Springfield? I think a lot of things to do with that is um, getting local contractors more work.
Yeah, the thing is, I'll, I pretty much all ideals are on the table. I just, you know, the thing is, is I just, and and the purpose of this meeting and this gathering is to gather that, gather as much information as we can and and have something concrete that I can take back to uh, the committee of the whole. Because it's like what she was talking about, the the wage, when we were made aware of it, Council President Letterman crafted some legislation, uh, uh, an order, um, a resolution or I'm not exactly sure what the term is, but it was brought before the council. Now, the thing is, is we couldn't just force implement it. And I can tell you, things that are brought before the council, please recognize that the city council by charter cannot create any expenditure. So we approve the contracts for the police, fire, teachers and and different things, but we cannot create an expenditure. Only the mayor can do that. Now, we have the authority to approve it and just like it's budgetizing, you're gonna start hearing a lot about the budget because June is budget time. We will approve his budget. He crafts the budget. When it comes to us, we can cut it. But we can increase it. And this funny thing about cutting it, he has the right to move money. Once it's appropriated, he can then move money around within the budget. So we're good at ideals or listening to your ideals, long as it doesn't cost any money. And when you're talking about paid leave, the way to get it done that would benefit Chelsea and and her, you know, constituents is for us to get an audit so that we have factual data because it's just like when we did benefits for soldiers that are uh, that are working for the police, fire department and things like that. We needed to know then what the cost was. And then if it's a union covered job, it has to be negotiated, even even something that's a benefit to them or a negative, it still is a part of the negotiated benefit package. So, um, Ari?
Yes, I'll keep it super quick. I was just wondering, do we have any like shared um, document or anything like?
Yes, I'll keep it super quick. I was just wondering, do we have any like shared, um, document or anything like that or like the way we're keeping track of notes for next meeting?
Um, I just n- not, well, uh, you, if you've been, I've, I've dropped down a few different ideals or things as they were said, but I don't. I'm not real good at taking notes if somebody wanted to try to do that. And I think what you saw uh, circulated, that got circulated, that was this young lady here, Aishla, you did that, correct?
No, actually, this was just an email I printed from Greg and.
Greg, Greg put something together, he sent it out, but, um, I took some notes and and just, you know, as we're, as we're winding down, these are the things that I kind of talked about was, um, start off with the group symposium or conclave. Uh, you know, and I wrote in there, maybe, you know, on workforce development, uh, bringing the right people together. Utilizing Focus Springfield as a tool, maybe to get that type of information out to the public. And so, uh, and that could, that is one of the things I wrote about. Uh, the second thing I wrote down was, um, there seemed to be a lot of interest in the creation of a directory of resource or directory or resource guide. Um, and then, um, then, uh, the comments were made by Ethel, you know, related to how important it was to personalize the guide. It had to be more than just a document. The document might be something that we would create. But the kids or the younger people who needed needed more something other than just a booklet that says, well, here's where you can go. They needed a personal type and it's always better when it's a relationship. So how do we build relationships to help marry people with somebody who can help them with that job? And, uh, there was a lot of, the next thing I wrote down was better marketing. The marketing of the city for jobs and manufacturing, but also, um, changing the perception of the city so that people who think about us as being a viable option as opposed to, you know, um, what is perceived now. Um, and then I made a note here, you know, in terms of the types of jobs that we might want to be would be like cleaning, somebody may made reference to clean energy, I read it, you know, I circle driver ed. Education as being something and, um, the lack of internships, you know, ease of access to internships. Yes.
But going to Ari's question, are we gonna have a chat room or something like that where we can swap?
I'm gonna send out another email tomorrow thanking you guys for joining us. I think this is a great idea. I I I, when I put in the first email, uh, this is our, this is our passion, like we are we were mentioned for a reason. It's like we all want to see the betterment of Springfield, Massachusetts. So, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure there're gonna be a chat group email.
I don't, I I don't, I mean, if you already was concerned about, I don't think there's so much issue in terms of you guys having a chat and talking about some sharing ideals. What I would like to do is is to be able to figure out when whenever we have, I I'm not prepared tonight necessarily have the next meeting. Because budget, if I said we're gonna meet June fourth, I can't tell you where we're gonna be doing June fourth. I'll try to give it as much lead time as I can, but the schedule has got to be fluid because even access to this type of room and these resources are going to get cloud up. I know that there were multiple requests for meetings and I've heard some contentious conversations recently because people want to have a meeting, counselors want to have a meeting about an issue. Focus Springfield only has so many resources, graduations are coming, they're all covered by Focus Springfield. Plus, um, we're in budget time, there's got budget hearings, we're mandated to have public hearings for that. Um, the meetings that run for budget time can be very long and contentious. So we may not have enough resource, so that's why I'm not prepared tonight to say we're walking out of here with a June fourteenth meeting date. I have, it has to be fluid, but I'll try to give as much lead time. And the nice thing that, one of the things about having so many people involved, you may not be here at the next meeting. But you may be here and somebody who's not here might not be here, but what I'm charging people is from what we did to. But this is what I'm kind of looking forward to is, you know, these types of ideals that are concrete that three, two, three, four months now on the road, we're all in agreement, not even agreement, but we've got a consensus. That these are the things that we want the council to work on. I don't need to Michael, you know, if, you know, the ease of access to internships, we may not need to. I don't necessarily need you guys to say, well, you need to go talk to, you know, Brooks Finch, you know, at Mass Mutual. But he's the guy who can put this person here. What I need to do is have that more macro or or more broader sense of what the council might need to do, so then they can solve the problem because as I said, a lot of departments not incent to it. And then if it is an expenditure, you know, it might require some money to pay people. The driver's ed program can't, greater ideals it is, can't just be implemented because we don't control the school department. And the curriculum that they have and the liability and who's gonna pay for it in the schools and stuff like that. But a collaboration and a conversation between us and the people who that are part of like what the reference that Dean represents can start that and, um, and if we can show value, sometimes there may be other resources that can help pay for stuff or it's just a matter of moving money around. Um, but we need to have the administration buy in and it may need for the city council leadership to have a conversation with the administration to say, this is what we need to do. And, um, but feel free, there's, you know, everybody should have everybody's email. You guys can share stuff, you can create your own chats and stuff. And I encourage you to do that and then just come back and be prepared for when we come together, my meetings or the meetings that I'm sharing, um, to have what we want to talk about. But and just be respectful that this is not the place for people to I could have our personal business, whatever type of relationship, I mean, me and Aishla know each other, me and Greg know each other. Uh, and other people know, just be, just be conscious, you know, Fiore and I work a lot and I mean, you guys have no clue. Um, you know, that's my forte, it's been workforce development, that's why I got the job, you know, the company. But just be respectful that, you know, this is not where Asia's not here to promote her specific business or company. Because if you go down that road of doing that, you might irritate somebody and that's not what they signed on for. It's supposed to be for more the broader, but please bring your work experience, your, you know, and, you know, your background as a counselor or a teacher, Indian chief, whatever it is to the table, because what we're looking for is ideals on how to make it better and, um, I think that's pretty much all I got.
But not to say that I would.
No, you won't. You won't, you, yeah. But the point is, is that I do appreciate everybody's time, uh, it's five fifty, so I think we've gone long enough. I'm, I'm, I always try to keep the meetings to an hour, to an hour, five, ten, fifteen, and we went over just a little bit longer than I wanted. But I do appreciate everybody's time. Is there any questions or anything that I need to know walking away? And does anybody not have my contact information? Cause you can, you can browbeat me, throw sticks and stones and call me anytime and just tell me what I need to know and I, I would appreciate if you guys would feel comfortable doing that. So, four one three, three four eight, eight zero three six is my cell. Hope everybody feels comfortable calling me and no bad questions, no judgment on questions.
Four one three, what was the next break?
Three four eight, eight zero three six, Melvin's cell.
Got you. I got a new number, Melvin.
Greg, you can throw my number away.
Don't mind if I do.
Greg doesn't leave Melvin alone, trust me.
Shia building might be a good place for a meeting if you're looking for space and that place where we had the first meeting is some great parking.
Um, well, the thing is, I'm trying to do a hybrid. So the thing is, is getting space, I have an office at Mason Wright, uh, that I run, keeps Springfield beautiful out of, uh, The Burger King on East Columbus Avenue next to Berkshire Bank has a conference space. Um, Reverend Bayman just opened Omni Point, they have conference spaces. The issue is not really space. It's the idea that we can be somewhere and that's why we're here today. Is that Focus Springfield affords us an opportunity for the meeting to be recorded. And it also gives the people who wasn't convenient for them to come down here, they're still participating, as you saw, Fiore started in his car, got to home, continued in the meeting. But that's what the thing is, that we go to those other spaces, will we have this fancy thing that makes me look like I'm looking sideways when I'm talking to the screen? But thank you, everybody, and appreciate you. Please stay safe, crazy world. It's not what you do, it's what they do to you. So thank you very much for your time.
Five bucks a person. I'll give you guys a tour of the yard and a homemade wine here, so we could have it in the backyard.
Cooking classes, uh, he is quite an interesting gentleman and he's a good person and he works, works really hard, uh, to put people to work.
He's very good.
So thank you, people, ladies.